Follow our meeting to order.
Here.
Brad?
Here.
Sarah Scoville?
Here.
And I'm here, so that's five to zero to zero. On March 29, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law a supplemental budget bill, which among other things extends the temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this further extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings promoting without a forum of a public body typically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternate access to the location. The language does not make any substantial changes to the open meeting law under an extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31, 2023 to March 31, 2025. We will now proceed with public comments. I'm going to have Vice Chair Sarah McGinnley manage that if there are any people in the room or online, and then we'll pass back to me to run the agenda. So Vice Chair McGinnley?
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? We'll start with the room.
Actually, hold on a second. Let me just read our statement about public comment.
Yes.
As a reminder, the public is invited to comment during this part of the meeting. Please say your name and full address for the record. Once the public comment period closes, members of the public will not be able to make comments or address questions to any speakers or members of the committee. We ask that you refrain from using the chat Q and A functions until after the public comment section has been over. Now I'll pass to you, Vice Chair McGinnley.
Great, thank you, Sheila. We're going to start with public comment. I'm going to keep a timer on my phone. Is there anyone in the room who would like to start us off? Yes. If you could come on up and approach the table.
I'll put this in here.
Yeah.
Sure. You just say your name and address.
Hi, my name is Maureen Haveland, and I live at 27 Hartford Street. My husband and I have three grown children who all went through the Bedford school system, and as many people, we moved to Bedford for the school system. There were two things that always stood out to me at every interaction with their teachers. The first was how much the educators genuinely loved working in Bedford and how happy they were. The second was their innovative teaching. Of course, these things go together. People only do their best work when they're happy in their jobs. I'm deeply saddened and troubled that our schools can't do right by our teachers with the budget increase mandated by the Finance Committee. This is our school, and we need to pay for it. We cannot ask the educators to finance our schools by working for less than fair wages. Our teachers have done everything they were asked to do and more during the last few years. During this time of unprecedented challenges, high inflation and rising costs, their salaries only increased 7%, falling behind many of our neighboring districts. If our teachers can't afford to live in Bedford or nearby towns, how long will they be willing? Teacher we lose is one that we've invested time and money in training, one that is difficult or impossible to replace. I'm here to add my voice to the many already saying that we will support the school committee if you advocate for the budget you need to settle the contract fairly and keep our school system one of the best in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff, I still can't see online. Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment?
No one has their hands raised.
Nope. Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to add? Mr. Donnelly?
Good evening, School Committee. Good evening, Superintendent. Nice to see you again. I want to talk about some of the times I have talked to you in the past.
Just get your name and address.
Oh, my name is Richard Donnelly. I live at 31 Holden Street.
Thank you.
I want to talk about some of the negotiations are finally settled. What type of school system will we have? You need to know that the teachers see the resolution of this contract as a signal about how much Bedford supports the schools, about how much Bedford supports teachers. The dollar amount is very important, but more importantly, the signal that you send to the teachers is going to have a lasting impact for years. You need to send a strong signal. Finally, I want to point out to you that you are the elected representatives of the people of Bedford. They entrust you to make the decisions that will make the schools the best. They want the best for their children. As I said last time, be bold. Go big in supporting this contract. Do what's in the best interest of the children and the best interest of the schools. Yes, I know it's a large expense. I know labor costs are a large expense of the schools. But honestly, the specialized people who are teaching your children, that is your school system. The school system is not the building. It's the people who work in that building. Finally, I've spoken to some other committees around town, and I know there's been a little bit of grumbling about that. And I want to point out that you were elected. And keep that in mind. Some of the other committees which are weighing in on the budget at town meeting were not elected to their positions. You were elected to represent the people of Bedford. They're trusting you to look out for their interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone now online who's raising their hand? Nope. Seeing none, is there anyone else in the room who would like to provide public comment? Okay. Chair Green, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move on to our consent agenda. Superintendent Chong, can you begin?
Sure. Unfortunately, there was an illness that prevented the minutes from getting into your packet, so you won't be voting on those minutes tonight. And we hold the maximums. That's going to be on your next consent agenda, the student activities account maximums, which is a standard thing we do in the fall. So what remains is no longer really a consent agenda because it's one item, but it is the standard acceptance of gifts for a lot of the standard gifts in addition to our ongoing support from the Bedford Education Foundation. I think there's some featured information about some of the projects that teachers are more awarded to conduct that we are asking for your vote to approve and accept.
Okay, great. Let's just do a round of questions. Angel?
I have no questions, just two comments. One, you know, thank you to the BEF for these grants. Thank you to all those teachers that took the time and effort to apply for them. And, you know, as a quick reminder and plug, that there's also other grant opportunities available to teachers through the Cultural Council of Bedford, of the Mass Cultural Council. And so, you know, I continue to say, great job, and, you know, look for some of those additional opportunities that might be able to keep having wonderful programs. So that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, Angel. Sarah Scoville?
I just want to say thank you. I feel like I'm very grateful for our community, for the BEF and the Rotary and the PTOs for supporting the different programming. I do a little plug for the BEF is looking for volunteers. So if you're interested in helping out, you could do that. But that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Brad?
Just echo the thanks to the BEF, the Rotary, and the PTO. And in the spirit of the consent agenda, I have nothing else to say.
Okay, Sarah McGinnley?
Yep, same thing. Many thanks to all, and I have no questions.
Likewise, I echo my. The school committee approved the gifts and acceptances, gift acceptance memo that was presented this evening.
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, but Angel?
Yes.
Sarah Scoville?
Yes.
Okay, next we have our FY '24 Town Annual Report, our first read in o. Superintendent?
So each year, we contribute our portion to the Town Annual Report, which is typically due at the end of the month. Each, this is my second time at it, and we are trying to trim it up, but make it more current in terms of things that happened last year. We changed the formatting a bit. And the main substantive difference this year is a extracurricular highlights feature with thanks to the various program directors to help support, adding some additional information that highlighted certain accomplishments of our students this year. It also doesn't have any pictures. Town typically takes a cache of pictures and sort of graphic designs it once they get all the reports. So I am sure there are some edits. Hoping we can approve tonight with any edits. But if there's substantive questions or concerns, I can, we can bring it back on October 8, and I will just beg the town's forgiveness. But feedback, questions for the annual report summarizing last year.
Thanks. Let's go for a round of questions. And thank you for just all of the work that brought this together. I know it takes a lot. I know we lay the format and the template that we update year over year with some additional answers here, so appreciate all the work on this. Angel, questions on this?
I don't have any specific questions about this at the moment.
No questions?
No.
Okay. Sarah Scoville?
I have, one, the format is great. I've seen many of these, and many of them have not been formatted great. So this is awesome. Is it going to be only digital?
No, they usually do issue a hard copy, so there is hyperlinks, obviously.
Yeah, how is that going to work?
Digitally, you can click it.
Yeah.
I try to make clear where you can find things based on the naming, but in the interest of brevity, we didn't want to reproduce like the policy on cameras or the district improvement plan.
Yeah.
We could, if that's helpful, we could put the actual literal URL. Although I think this day and age, anyone who wants to read it will probably go online and, you know, click.
Yeah. I wonder if we can, can we maybe ask the town whether you can, if there's going to be like a preface or something at the beginning? Because I'm sure the other departments will have hyperlinks too. Whether, just, I'm just thinking, I mean, like, my parents don't live in town, but there are plenty of people my parents' age who will receive this in paper copy. They, they're, you know, town reading goers. They're going to look through it. And just to reference, like, this is how you do it if you'd like more information.
Yeah, I think the other thing is if you just read it, it just looks like underlined. Like, you don't actually need to click the hyperlink to actually understand what's being said. It's a hyperlink for anyone online who wanted more detail. That is something that I added, I think, last year and continue this year.
Yeah, it makes it really clean and good, and it makes it probably half or more than half the pages, which I'm sure the town is delighted by.
I'll talk to the town about whether they can preface that because that might be a case across other reports.
Yeah, awesome. But other than that, it's, it looks great.
Thanks.
Okay, Brad?
So I already told Cliff I found a bunch of rather minor edits that I'd like to communicate to him before we approve it or find a way that we approve it subject to my edits. Most of them are rather trivial, sort of take a comma out or change a grammar or something. There are three I just wanted to call out and make sure everybody's in agreement with them. So in the first paragraph under purpose, it reads in the second sentence, "Our vision is to aspire to be a collaborative school system." And I would like to take the words "to aspire."
Yeah.
I think our vision is to be a collaborative school system.
Okay. Let me just check to see if that's actually what our vision statement says, and we can fix it as part of the approval strategy plan because I agree.
Well, you're not going to fix all of the other details that I'm going to suggest now, so.
Okay.
Because there's a dozen of them. There's no page numbers, sorry. I'll just call your attention to the table under FY '24 budget. The last column is, the numbers in there are not the percentage change over FY '23. The numbers in there are the percentages of the total.
Yep.
And so I think we want the percentage of change over 2023, of, yeah, 2023. So we should correct the numbers. I don't see the value of those percentages that are there, so. And then the last one is really just kind of a question out of, a little more out of curiosity. Towards the end, there's a part about extracurriculars, and where is it, under athletics? Under athletics, there is. Under athletics, it says in the introductory paragraphs that we have 71 teams. And then the first bullet point says 17 of 24 teams qualified for postseason play. So I think we need to qualify it in. I'm guessing that that's 24 high school varsity teams, but we should put it in there so it doesn't look like we're stacking the deck to make the claim.
Yeah.
Yeah. The rest of them, I just don't want to waste everybody's time with, so I would just sort of pass them on.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. And I think we can see if there are any other comments, but just forward looking, we might be able to approve this, Brad, with your agreed on edits.
Yeah. And by the way, I love the content, love the, I love the format, so.
Thanks. Sarah McGinnley?
Thanks. Yeah, I, like Brad, had a few just typos, you know, little things that I think we have to clean up a little bit prior to approving it subject to those edits. I agree about, I had the same question here about the percentage change. Otherwise, I have no substantive questions.
Um.
Sarah.
Sorry, the mission statement that's on the website is different than the mission statement here.
It says purpose, but, yeah.
Well, the mission, yeah, the mission statement is the first sentence, which I think is the same. The vision statement is where you had a, right? And I'm not, let's see, I don't even know what the vision statement is. Mission, vision. It is, it's interesting. It has, as educators within the Bedford Public Schools, we aspire to be, the way its phrase works better than the way it is here, I'll fix it to, like, if you read that one, it seems a little bit more direct. Or, yeah.
Thanks, Sarah Scoville. I don't have any additional questions. Again, thanks, Cliff, to you and the team for pulling all this together. As I know we're hoping to be good stewards and get this to the town on time. So I would like to suggest that the school committee approves the FY '24 Annual Town Report as presented with the edits suggested by Sarah McGinnley and Ryan Horison in terms of just small edits and to also make sure that our mission statement on our website matches what we're putting in the town.
Yeah. Can we just not call it the Town Report in the motion? Because it isn't the Town Report. It's our report to the town.
Yeah.
Or the, it's the Public Schools Annual Report.
Yes, okay. So just to restate, the school committee approves FY '24 School Report as presented today with the suggested edits.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, but Angel?
Yes.
Sarah Scoville?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Sarah McGinnley?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so five to zero to zero.
Great. Thank you all.
Okay. And then next up, we have our update on the six-year capital plan in FY '26.
I think we're doing the fiscal year and close out for fiscal '24 first, if that's all right?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
I'm probably reading that, so yes, you're correct. So you can.
Yeah, so Finance Director Julie Crean is here to join us. We're going to be looking back and then looking far ahead. When we get to our October 22 finance meeting, we will then look at the present and then again ahead at fiscal '26, the introduction to the fiscal '26 forecast, budget. But today, we're going to try to put a bookend on fiscal '24, the year that I'm glad is over. And then we will hear from both Julie and Ron about the capital portion of the fiscal '26 request, which the town process is already well underway. The whole process is earlier this year due to a request from the Finance Committee to deliver a budget in accordance with the town bylaws in time for the town meeting. So we are accelerated on that budget process, which we'll again update you more on in the coming meetings. But first, let's close out fiscal '24. I will just, there's a pretty detailed memo describing what the year-end numbers look like from Julie. That's attached to my cover memo. Bottom line, as I'm sure you all recall, it was a very challenging year where the cost overruns due to the extraordinary expenses that we've talked quite a bit about ran close to 2.4 million overall, of which approximately 1.8 million was found or closed through special revenues that we secured from the state and tapping our revolving account funds. And as you all know, we ended the year with a request from the Finance Committee for $555,000 to close the remainder of the gap. This actually sort of distills all that happened. And I'm sure you have a lot of questions. So I don't know, Julie, if you want to add any other introductory remarks before we begin?
Yeah, I just wanted to, this is, this will be the last report that you see in sort of the old, older format. It'll be expanded line item level reporting going forward. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we were, we've been working on forecasting and planning for regular updates in a more expanded line item way that is, is our new system supports, so. So Cliff, do you want me to just walk through the memo? Or how do you want to do this?
Chair, do you want to, Chair Metta Green, do you want to have Julie walk through the memo? Do you want to, did you all review, want to start with questions? How do you want to approach it?
I think what would be helpful, if Julie could walk us through the memo.
Sure.
Just to kind of frame the conversation, and then it will be easier for the members to ask any questions.
Great. Okay, so, yep, so you have, this is the final fiscal update on the fiscal '24 budget. So the expenditures, this is, this report is the year on status. And basically, obviously, we, in a year where there is a deficit, the goal is to get to zero. So that's not always the goal, but it was last year. So there were the planned budgetary offsets, which are very significant, that are always a part of our budget process, grants and circuit breaker and all of that.
The ones that you just approved earlier today for this year. A lot of them.
And then there were the extra million approximately from the state in extraordinary relief, both reserve and extraordinary relief. And then about $300,000 in additional special fund revenue that we were able to call from various accounts. And I should also say that the carryforward circuit breaker, which was about 550, was also applied. So that does add up to a rather big number. And then finally, the $555,000 transfer to close the gap. So the first chart on the first page really is very big picture in terms of the appropriated budget and encumbrances that were carried forward for bills that had not yet been received at the close of the prior year and that were paid in FY '24. And then the reserve fund transfer making our available budget for, up to 47,770 and change. So we've broken down the expenditures on salaries, 38.2 million, operating expenses, 3.5 million, special education tuition, 3.3 million. And these, that, in particular, that number is a, is a net number. So I explained towards the end of the, I want to give people a sense that we actually have gross tuition expenses of, of more like 6 million. So our regular transportation expenses and the special education transportation expenses, those are the five main areas we've been asked to report on previously. And again, we're expanding those, those areas going forward. So our total expenditures were, are listed there. We carried a lot fewer purchase orders forward. That, that means that we combed everything, what was going to come to fruition, what wasn't. The reason the number was a little higher the prior year is because we had just gone live with the Munis accounting in March. And so we literally had like, you know, three months to learn and, and do the maintenance with the purchase order. So a lot were carried forward. You know, that was just sort of a feature of the conversion. So that's, that's the first table, and we do include our year-end balances. You will see that we, we ended up being able to carry a little bit forward in the circuit breaker account, and that'll help with tuition expenses this year.
That is historically low, right?
It is historically very low, yes. Yes. There was, you know, some last minute change that occurred that something, you know, so it ended up being a little bit higher. We were kind of shooting for zero. The impact aid, that's another area that we had been able to carry some reserve for in the past, although the town had suggested that they would like to be the ones to reserve in case of any issues with state impact aid funding. So we had complied with that. That was the account, remember, that allowed us to reconcile the ed code debt that we had a few years ago. So we had about $50,000 in that account, and now we have basically nothing. The migrant education account, that was about $750,000 to support the students who lived in the Plaza last year and now in the Lowell Hotel. We do have a small amount left there, which does roll over and can, will help us in the coming year. Very low balance in the preschool revolving account, the athletic revolving account. The reason these accounts are highlighted is because these are the ones that offset the budget. There are a few other accounts, and we'll give you those balances with the budget. But these are, these are why these selected. And you will see that there's, the rental revolving account is also very low, and you will see that the lunch account has a very healthy balance. And that is entirely due to the fact that the state has funded free lunches for everyone, and this is a participation-driven program. The more meals that are consumed are, the reimbursement is all at a higher level. So this is why we were able to settle that contract and hopefully.
Which you will ratify in two items from now. And it also, as you'll hear in the capital, allows us to help the town out, like we used to have some capital.
That's right, right, we were, so that's a good news, that's a piece of good news, really helpful news. So the fund balances are lower across the board, with the exception of the lunch fund. Just moving on to a bit more detail, we want to show you the budget variance by the five major areas. And you can see that in the chart on the, near the top of the second page, that the variance, the positive variance in salaries of 308,000 helped defray the overages that persisted in the other accounting areas. At the largest, because of the million that came in from the state for extraordinary circuit breaker reserve relief, et cetera, we were able to cover most of the tuition costs. The biggest year-end deficit was the special ed transportation. Just a few notes about salaries. These savings result from turnover and attrition savings, as well as positions held open at the end of the year. Although it was late notice, we were still able to achieve some savings in the last three months of the year, which was a positive thing. So I've broken out for you the category of areas where there were some savings. And then you will see a large negative area that we're highlighting, that we're doing a lot of work on to manage in the upcoming year regarding our long and short-term substitute costs, a very traditionally volatile area, very hard to control. But we are doing what we can, there are some aspects that we can control, and we're working very hard on that. The operating expense category is, the bad news in that area is covering up a lot of, actually more positive surpluses in accounts. The, obviously, the largest deficit in that category was our temporary labor that we used, and we're, that's, that's the deficit. And we did have savings in other accounts, administrative technology, professional development, supplies and equipment, and maintenance of buildings. The, some of these savings are somewhat inflated by the extra offsets that we applied, which is why that last section, which is pretty complicated, but that's why that's there. I wanted to sort of unmask the sort of artificial savings, so you had a more true sense of where things ended. Tuition, the points here are that the extraordinary and reserve relief of a million rounded covered most of the added tuition space. We were pretty much at gross 5 million, and now we're at gross 6. And that is a tremendously well-conceived program by the state, and incredibly helpful that we were able to get that help. I do want to remind people in this, you'll hear this in the future discussions, that some of it comes early and is then helps, again, in the current year. 450,000 of that million will not, will be deducted from our claim because some of it, they were funded in two different pockets, and one was to be deducted and one was not. There were, this was the year that districts had, it was an unbelievable amount of extraordinary relief claims. The state did not have enough money, but they knew, that's why the reserve relief was, it was a supplemental budget appropriation, right? And that was why that was put into place, because districts knew that they were potentially in trouble. And in fact, they were. So, but the string on that one was, you don't get it twice. And it seems like free money, but it really isn't. It's, it's, you've had extraordinary expense increases, and if the state were to help with just the year in which that happened, and then not in the next year, then districts are still in a terribly deep hole. It is sort of casually referred to as free money, but it isn't. And it's a well-conceived program that really, really helps districts. General transportation, we are just slightly off there. Again, fuel escalation costs were budgeted, but not sufficiently. We also had, we were a little off on the vocational transportation that we are required legally to do when students go to a non-member vocational school. Minuteman is typically the school that that happens with. And that's when a program that the student needs is not available at Shawshank. Transportation, we've spoken extensively about. Basically, there were three things going on, driver shortage, driving up costs, our fixed-price contractor struggling with hiring drivers and the ability to serve its members, and also an increase in eligible riders. So we, it was a triple whammy. So this last section, I really, I didn't want to mask and cover, and I wanted you to have a more true understanding of the real variances. So that is the purpose of this last section. So again, I'm not grossing up all of the sort of originally approved normal offsets that we approve every year with the budget, which have been pretty stable. Get a little bit of a better picture, so a truer and more complete picture. It's important to note that these additional offsets do mask the true expenditures in several accounts. So I sort of added them back, so you could sort of see that our salary expenses, for example, were, to the good, more like 150,000, which is actually a pretty small margin, given that that's a huge part of our budget. Operating expenses were actually negative by more than the 93 in the chart above, I think it's 93, more like 168 negative, so.
Negative variance.
Correct, negative variance.
Yes.
So we actually expended $168 more than the revised budget. Yes, 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 yes. Special education, you can see that the actual expended is showing as 4.2 with a negative variance of about a million, which is about the extraordinary relief amount. And then you can see not, no change in regular transportation. There weren't any offsets there in that area, that's a clean area. And then just, you know, we want to be aware of the scope of the situation we're dealing with, with special ed transportation. We actually expended, expended 1.8 million, which is a very significant amount of money, so much higher than the 753 that was budgeted. And, you know, without the extra offsets that we achieved, that would have been a deficit of 729,000. So that's why that last section is there, is sobering. So I'm happy to answer questions and provide any additional information.
Julie, thanks so much for the work through and pulling this together. Really helped us sort of explain and frame the expenditures from this past year. So let's start with a round of questions, Angel, I'll start with you.
Just as a, just like for a reminder purposes, the column that's the revised, fiscal year 24 revised budget, like when is that, are those numbers from versus, I get that the expended is like, now we know exactly how much was spent. But just, just for context, like, when was, do you remember about when that revised, those revised budget numbers would be from?
You, so basically, the, we, there's always a original approved appropriated, transfers in and out with a revised budget. So that's any, anything like a budget transfer done from the year for like someone moved to $100 from one account to another, that type of thing. That's very standard accounting system lingo. This is where the budget was at the end of the year. The 555,000, for example, got, increased the budget dramatically in a couple different areas. I think we spread it among three areas, actually, contract labor, tuition and, not tuition, probably mostly transportation. So it's a lot of ins and outs there, which I think, I don't know if that answers your question, Angel.
I don't know if you're asking, so Angel, we're going, when we present the reforecast for fiscal 25 on October 22 this year, he will re-vote.
A revised budget.
But this is actually revised again because it included the finance transfers.
The transfer money, okay, got it, now I understand, thank you. So, so if I could just build on that question?
And you can go back to the chart on the first page, which kind of shows you the, what, how you revised at the final available budget, which is the revised budget figure, the 47,770. That's a more sort of very, you know, easier to track.
So I think you've answered this question, but I just want to be clear, I'm hearing you right. The column for FY24 revised budget is the final revision to the budget.
Correct.
So there was an interim revision, there were several during the course of the year. Those are not presented here, right? That's.
No, it's the accumulated total.
In the middle of the year and make some adjustments, those numbers are, you've made adjustments since then. So it's not like that was a number from January that changed, it's, this is.
The revised budget, the revised budget, yes, correct. The revised budget column equals the first three numbers on the chart, the broad chart on the first page. The original appropriation, the encumbrances carried forward, and the reserve fund transfer. That is the bottom line of the total revised budget.
Sweet, thank you. Is there, so just, I want to make sure I heard this part right. So the incumbent funds are rolled forward, the number that we see here, the smaller number, the 2,000, is that just more typical of what you would see, like, range-wise?
We did a fantastic job working that because certainly we're not going to carry something forward that's not going to come to fruition and then require a larger reserve fund transfer from the town. That's basically what happens there. That is something that should be done every year to review any encumbrances, you know, when you pay a final bill, do you close out the last few hundred on an encumbrance? That's part of the work that is just a maintenance piece. And we did a, by necessity, a absolutely outstanding job. My staff was, and our special ed staff really helped with this, and we evaluated all of the POs in the system, how much they had to cover, would it be enough? And we have not had any surprises in all summer, so.
The year before, I think, was much bigger because of that means.
Correct.
Well, that part I understand, but I don't have contact, I wasn't here before, so I didn't know, like, is the number usually more in the 50s? Is it 150s, like?
53 is small, I have seen it, I've seen it 250, 300, 450 is not unprecedented, but it's a lot. I mean, it depends if you're, if you're, we also were on our vendors to bill us as promptly as possible, especially the big bills.
Get that to us now, yes, okay, excellent. And, and I think, I mean, I was making the assumption that the more experience everyone gets with the new accounting system.
Absolutely.
Right, is that makes finding these things that much quicker, easier, and more kind of streamlined.
Just as an example, so as we commence the fiscal 26 budget process, which we kicked off internally today with leadership team, we are building in all the fiscal controls that we described. And today, we reviewed the substitute budget, actual budgeted training. Basically, people understand sort of how to, and we're going to be doing that monthly, right, as a exercise. We'll report to you all quarterly, but we're going to, as a leadership team, look at the high-risk accounts. As you can see from one of the earlier charts, the substitute budget overran by like 30 or 40%, right? And part of that was because of the lack of visibility into, it's a multi-part beast, right? Because all the principals have some level of influence over that, and it all aggregates, but if you're not tracking it together. But we now have a structure in place to use the Munis reporting to catch things very early. So as you saw in the strategic plan, objective 3.1, one of the outcomes was no untimely surprises in terms of the budget process. So I cannot promise, like, that there won't be bad news. Last year, the bad news that we got late, it wouldn't have necessarily been different news if we had it early, but we would have been a little bit more, right? This year, you'll get the bad news earlier, if there is bad news or good news.
I mean, there's no denying that there was just bad news, but I think.
But we have, the systems are up and running, we're about to load all the adjustments into the accounts, turn on the sort of hard controls, everything, you can't overrun anything, you have the budget transfer, those are all in place.
And we're fully staffed as of Monday, so isn't that wonderful?
Love, congrats, I know what that's like. Okay, excellent, thank you. You just, you mentioned that 82,000-ish in the circuit breaker fund carryover was kind of like historically low. What does that mean for us for like the next year, like is that?
That means it's, 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 it is a very critical tool to manage these costs. So we will be relying instead upon the stabilization fund.
You recall that part of the case for the stabilization, we used to carry intentionally more buffer elbow room in the circuit breaker account, but because of the extraordinary these costs, the legislature authorized this additional vehicle, basically understanding that towns need multiple sort of tools. So we did, we now have that stabilization fund, but because the challenges that are described here are going to carry over into fiscal 25, we would like to have more room in both tools ideally, but we had to draw down, it was intentioned to draw it down a little bit more than we had because we would have a new tool, but it was not the intention to have 2.4 million dollars of additional cost. So we are still working that issue, and we will report on that on October 22, the update from what we gave you in May in terms of what we've been able to accomplish to close some of this special gap, but it is not, you know, that, that problem carries over, and we're still going to do that.
So just so I understand, so we got this, the 1.1 million dollars with the, can't, the 450 that can't be used, does that effectively just mean the maximum if we needed additional support? Because there's, you know, again, random costs that come in, is the maximum we'd be able to get is the $650,000? Like, we wouldn't be able to get the same amount of money, because I'm not, or maybe I'm not.
So our, our claim is based on, say, the 6 million, right? And that there's some, you know, there's a lot of nuances, but basically 75% of the 6 million, because it doesn't go all the way up to 100. And also, it doesn't reimburse the first, say, 50-ish, because those are considered something we should be able to handle. Circuit breaker, it's extraordinary, yeah, trips when it goes over a certain amount. So the claim is based on the full 6 million that we're about to get quarterly payments of for the upcoming year. They pay out in four quarterly payments, but, but the 450 will be subtracted from each of the quarterly payments. So that's how that works.
We are hoping.
And then in FY20, this current year claim, which so far looks to be in the ballpark of what the claim has been, will, we would get the full 75, no deductions. So this is a one-year issue.
So this is a.
Well, it's the second year of a two-year issue.
Well, correct, correct. The fact that the circuit breaker isn't keeping up with our claim fully.
And we hope, right, that we don't qualify again for extraordinary relief this year, because that means we have, compared to the new high baseline, we went a kryptonite wire, right? So we're maintaining, though, the gross tuition. So we're maintaining, though, the gross tuition level from last year, which was extraordinary, right? And which was, given the timing, not built into the twenty-twenty-five budget. So this is a two-year problem that we need help solving. But when we're on the other side of it, presumably, presumably, we'll get the full circuit breaker without deduction, and hopefully, it'll break our way, and it might come back down from the historic high, right? But right now, we're on the second year of this, you know.
Awesome. Um, so that's it for my questions. I do want to just applaud kind of both versions of your table. I think it is.
Okay. Was that helpful?
A way to, but I just think, I think part of the complaints, if you will, that we heard, right, was that there wasn't a lot of transparency, or people, or people quite couldn't understand, right? And this is not saying everything's rosy, we're at zero, thumbs up, right? It's, look, this is where we were. We had some help, and we had these things that happened to get to zero, right? It was a hard work, and it was, um, you know, a lot of effort that got, went into this to get to zero. But I think that this, right, especially for someone like me, I'm still kind of learning and understanding, right? Like, well, how do we get to these points is, is just, right, it's, look, here's, here it is, right? This is what happened. This is what, where we started, and now we're at zero, right? There's, which is where you want to be at the end of the year. Um, so I just want to applaud you for putting this in there, right? Like, because I think that that is, um, gives a level of transparency for folks that, like me, right, that don't quite understand, right, how we get here, um, to kind of understand it better, so I appreciate it.
Good. I'm glad.
You should note, you know, in the annual report, we wrote this simultaneously. There's this one very tight paragraph that describes a challenging year without the scorey detail, but it is in there for the historical record when someone in two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three reads about this year.
Uh, that's it. I'm, I'm toast.
Thank you, Angel. Sarah Soto?
I, thank you for putting this together. These, these are great. I, I'm, we've talked about this a lot, and, and there's no big surprises, and I'm glad that it all is, is, um, come to complete. You must be relieved as well. Um, the one thing I, I haven't realized in my time here is the importance of the lunch revolving fund. And I'm feeling guilty that my children don't eat lunch within the school very much, because it seems like that is a huge, um, support to everything. So, um, I just want to say that out loud to tell people who are listening that you should, um, support the more that, even with the free lunch, the more that we use the free lunch, the more money we get from the state, and it's just like positive cycle. And the more, my understanding is, the more that kids eat, the more, um, sort of healthier, delicious alternatives the lunchroom can acquire.
I really wanted to eat lunch on, I think it was yesterday when I was in lunchroom, but I had to go to a meeting, but it was, uh, some stir fry. It looked a little bit. But, but that is a stretch goal, if you recall, and we, we think, you know, we have some resources here to start to make some shifts.
I also want to report that the lunch, the, the school nutrition program is also fully staffed, which is, which is remarkable. I have not seen it in my five years here in Bedford. We have been in pinballing from crisis to crisis in that program. Also, we, the, the district had to subsidize it during COVID because the numbers plummeted, obviously, when kids were hybrid and they weren't even in the buildings. It's a, it's a volume business. When you're trying to put together a, a lunch for, you know, three dollars and seventy-five cents a pop, um, and pay your, your, your labor costs and your, your food costs, even though they're subsidized by the government, um, it's not easy. Not too many of us could manage to do that, and our staff is thrilled to be, our, our assistant director and our director are thrilled to not be covering for vacancies a hundred and forty days like they did last year, which is incredibly significant, and, um, they're excited to have a new contract and to be attracting enough people, um, to be fully staffed, and hopefully, that will, that will improve the offerings. That's the goal of, that's what everyone wants.
Your votes ratified hopefully very shortly.
Thanks. That's all I, I have. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Brad?
Um, thank you, Julie, and let me start off with a, uh, comment or observation. Um, the observation is, uh, a feature of this report. It is, is that this story is completely consistent with what you told us several months ago, and that is very reassuring. I think that it is really nice. I think Sarah just touched on it. There's really no surprises here. Um, there's a few, you know, little tiny changes in numbers, but that's to be expected. So, um, it's very reassuring to know that. We heard months ago about what this, what's really going on here in qualitative terms, and the numbers now tell the same story, and so, um, that, that's, just to say that's reassuring. Um, I do have a couple of questions. I want to ask a little bit about the encumbrances carried forward, mostly because I want to make sure I understand what it means. So my understanding is that an encumbrance carried forward is a bill that we know we're going to have to pay, that's also getting carried forward with the money to pay for, right? So it's essentially a neutral impact on the old budget and the new budget. Yes? Okay, great. So the fact that it's higher or lower than it was before is only a question of when we are. So it's good news that it's smaller, because it means that, you know, we're catching up on things, and the vendors are catching up on things, but it doesn't have any.
No, it does not.
Good. Thank you. So, and thanks for the hard work to do that. Um, all right. So one area that I need a little help with here, um, if I look on page two at your major budget categories, and then in the text where you break it out to try to explain the variances, I'm not quite sure what you did here, because, so let me take the salaries as an example. You have three bullet points there for teachers, paraprofessionals, and substitutes. And if I combine those three numbers that you have listed there.
Yeah.
It doesn't, uh, uh, amount to three-hundred-eight thousand, uh, thousand.
Those are highlights. Um, there's, there's, um, probably fifty to sixty variances, and I was, I, I, I literally.
The big ones.
Correct.
All right. Okay.
Correct.
Because there's actually another two-hundred missing there. That's, that's kind of a big miss, but, okay. All right, that, um, that, I, I'll, I'll let that one go. That's not of grave concern to me. Um, two other things are both, so, under, um, what you did under special ed transportation, this one through seven, um, about all the different things, let me take that as an example. So number four says athletic revolving account used to reduce coaches' salaries ten thousand dollars. I, I think what you mean is that we used money from the revolving account to reduce the impact on the budget from the oper- of the operating budget of ten thousand dollars.
There's a missing, there should be a header here.
Yeah, it's not a follow-on.
Break here.
I, I guess, I just don't want anybody to see the words "used to reduce coaches' salaries", because I don't think we reduce coaches' salaries.
Correct.
So I think we should change the language there to say something like "offset cost of", or something like that, but just change the language. That's true for preschool salaries as well. And study overtime and, right, uh, reduce to, yeah, anyway, just, I think that.
Thank you.
Um, and then finally, in the very last sentence, which I also applaud putting this chart in here and the point that you're trying to make here. It says that the school successfully managed an additional one-point-eight million in special ed expense. Is it really true that the whole one-point-eight million was special ed expense? Because that seems like, uh, uh, sort of a reasonable umbrella summary, but I don't, I, I think this sort of table tells a slightly different story, so. It, it's maybe just additional expense growth, unexpected expense growth or something, but.
Well, um.
It was driven, the, the three main drivers were.
The question is, does what, does it add up to one-point-eight-eight million of special ed expense?
Prob- the actual sp- actual expense is probably more than that, right? Because we had to use some of the reserve, but you remember, there's more than a million dollars of tuition, transportation overruns in the seven, eight-hundred thousand, and.
One-point-two spent.
Yeah, so it, it was those three big categories were just, so.
I'm not.
I mean, if I'm just looking at the table, the table doesn't support that statement. The table shows one-point-eight million in total, of which at least a hundred-and-fifty thou, well, that's negative. And the regular transportation and some operating expenses are in there also. You're pretty close to one-point.
But you're.
You're still at one-point.
It's masking, within the operating expenses, is mask the contracted services, right? And there's additional offsets that are already built in, right, that are, this is just unmasking the additional, um, offsets, not all the offsets that are, are regular. So that operating expense, there's more special ed contract expenses inside of that line, right?
The, um, the cost overrun.
I guess I'm looking for the document to be standalone without having to explain to people why that does not look consistent. Okay?
Okay.
You know, hopefully Julie won't always be there to say, no, actually, there's, this is masking that, and this number means that, and so, I mean, with full transparency.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the approach to offsets was something, so, so this, you know, I think what's baked in, so what you approved at the beginning of the meeting around, uh, Title I, I D A, these federal grants, those are always baked in as part of the budget, right, that isn't hitting the operating budget. But they mask, right, the actual cost, because we offset and charge off to these federal grants a lot of these costs. So this is how we've been doing it. Um, this table, I think, was designed to demonstrate the additional offsets, right, that were required, um, on top of the regular ones, just to, to, to demonstrate the scope and magnitude of this particular, um, shift, but.
Okay, well, show report, not mine, so I, I think you can follow my advice or not.
Yeah, okay.
Was that correct?
I'm done. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Sarah beginning?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Julie, to echo everyone else. This, um, as Sarah and Brad said, you know, we, we knew this information. Seeing it on paper is both a relief that it, it all tracks, and also pretty shocking, I mean, just to see the, the level of expenses. I know you highlighted some of them in the special education arena, but also elsewhere. Um, a few questions. Number one, like Sarah said, I, I didn't quite appreciate the school lunch revolving account until it stayed out like this. Um, you say here that it, it has increased as expected once universal meals came into play. What was that increase in participation? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, I can't, I don't think I can quote that to you right now. I'm sorry. I think, but we're, yeah, I, I, I can get you that information, Sarah. Yeah, we have the, that's something that our director tracks.
Is this big increase something that we're going to benefit from this year and then following? Or like, is this something that we could continue to see a large gain? Or is it such a small incremental gain that we could expect?
Uh, I, I wouldn't expect to see like a incremental gains. Um, we're hoping, actually, it will be, um, watched carefully this year, because, um, the salaries have been increased substantially, so, um.
Breakfast is coming into the bloodstream this year, too.
Right, that was my next question.
That will help, actually. Yep.
Okay, so the breakfast will be included for this.
But I also wondered, would it advert, like, the enrollment numbers going down would also adversely affect it, right? Because there's less kids available to buy into it.
Yeah, right, right now, I think the net gain, we'll see. Breakfast is new, and it's rolling out um, in stages across the schools, so we won't probably see the full impact this year, but we're trying to make sure that it, um, is operationally feasible. Um, uh, so I think Davis hasn't rolled out, for example, yet, because they're the most intensive in terms of making sure that food is served properly.
Is, is there a little bit of a marketing campaign that can be done to, um, I mean, if we didn't know about this? And again, I feel, I shouldn't admit this, my senior in high school has prided himself for never getting school lunch, which I feel terrible about now. So whether that, that can happen potentially.
They do have a lot of ideas.
Okay, good.
There definitely is an uptick, particularly the element, Lane School, the lines, there's definitely, we're trying to manage the, the increased demand, actually. Um, so there's some shifts in the routines, too, that we're figuring out.
Well, that, that's good, and I'm glad breakfast will be, will be part of this as well. Um, I think this is more a question for Cliff. I know when we were talking about the special education audit district tuition, you were saying that there's going to be a new high baseline. What would be that new high baseline to trigger extraordinary relief?
Well, so it, we, the grossed-up tuition was roughly six million, and we're, we're sort of at that mark this year. In order to trigger the extraordinary relief, there's a formula, but you have to be, is it twenty-five percent more than the prior?
Yeah, I think so. I think it would be, no. I, I think that that would be so unlikely.
It would be, yeah, it would be super extra-extraordinary and, yeah.
We're not, we're not seeing that yet this year.
We, we, we're, 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 you know, stable right now, and we're, we're meeting monthly per the fiscal controls, Julie, myself, and Marion Vine, literally going through every child and if change of placement, tracking the cost differential, if it goes from in district to out of district, or in some cases, out, in, or move out, move in. Um, so we're doing that, um, monthly, you know, structured way.
Great. Well, thank you, Julie. Um, I found your summary extraordinarily helpful, especially walking us through it. Um, I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, many of the questions I have written down, I've always already asked and you've answered. Again, I want to echo my thanks, agree, you did a good lead-up in this, as we're going over budget stuff. It was nice to see it on paper and see it explained. I know this is also helping inform how we forecast and talk about our, uh, plans, uh, or our budget and expenditures against that going forward, um, and just appreciate the detail. So I know just a couple questions, just thank you, Julie, to you and the team that's together. And, um, there is no vote on this. This was, uh, more just, uh, an update. So, um, with that, Cliff, anything else on this, or would you like to move to the next item?
No, as I, I mentioned, we will, um, so we're moving, looking ahead now on the capital side. Come October twenty-second, we will reforecast fiscal twenty-five, do our first formal quarterly report on expenditures to date in fiscal twenty-five, and preview and set the stage for the public conversation with the school committee on the fiscal twenty-six budget, operating budget. This is the fiscal twenty-six capital budget. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Julie and Ron to give you some more detail and answer your questions, but, um, we are, um, on track to present to the, um, capital expenditure committee, um, in the early part of November, but these, um, requests were actually already due to the town. Um, so hopefully, we'll all be on the same page by the end of tonight. I wanted to highlight a couple of things that were of high, um, visibility last year. So, um, last year, may recall that we had a nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar request for capital expenditures with respect to school security. It was subsequently reduced to seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand in the final analysis in conversation with FinCom, but we have been able to successfully accomplish many of the key parts, even this early in fiscal twenty-five, primarily the installation of all the security cameras. Uh, are, they're all operational. They have already proven hugely valuable to the points that we've been making around reducing investigations, serving a deterrent value. We're working on some kinks in terms of making sure that the policy that you all approved last October is operationalized in the spirit of, um, what you intended, um, but it has been a relatively smooth rollout. We had signaled that there would be an additional third installment of a, um, sizable request for capital expenditures to complete that three-year, uh, school safety plan. However, in conversation with, um, Finance Committee Select Board members, our understanding is the town is, uh, the capital budget is tight. In looking at the largest expenditure, uh, it was related to interior door controls, electronic control. Um, there is emerging sort of information about what best practices around doors and how doors can protect in an emergent situation. But that, uh, electronic aspect is not necessarily something that, um, is a necessary expenditure right now. So we are actually pulling off of the table right now, or recommending, um, pulling off all of the school security, um, costs for this year with a placeholder for fiscal twenty-seven, as we do a little bit more research about what is the most cost-effective way to mitigate risk. The other piece of the proposal that you might recall, um, was, um, film on windows to present, prevent, um, or to, to deter and to slow down entry. Ron and I and the team have been reviewing sort of what does this stuff actually do? And, um, unfortunately, they don't actually stop bullets, um, unless you buy the really expensive kind. They do slow egress into a building, but, um, they don't actually stop the bullets, depending on the kind of gun. It was a hundred thousand dollars, so we are still wanting to assess, like, this, is this investment at this time, you know, absolutely necessary? So that, we're pulling off in, um, favor prioritizing some other things that Julie and, and Ron will, um, share. So, and this is again in, in consultation with the town around their expectations around the size of our overall capital request. Uh, but we will come back to you with, um, Axios is five-hundred here, it was three-hundred, right?
Three, yeah, yeah.
With, with sort of a refined out-year, um, request for those. With, with sort of a refined out-year, um, request for those components. The second thing that is also not a request for the fiscal '26, but we want to flag is, as you may recall, last year, um, the first week of school was very, very hot. And, um, it was, uh, we almost called it heat day, um, in the first couple of weeks of school. This year has been relatively smooth, we have, are in process of finalizing HVAC at Lane, but there are different, the other parts of the, of the school infrastructure that are prone to overheating. So we are, we've begun an assessment to baseline sort of where else, um, where are the hottest points? How would we prioritize over the course of the next five to 10 years if we want to increase HVAC? There's no request on the table that's official, but given the increase in temperature, average temperature, this is an area that will probably prevent teaching and learning if we don't try to get ahead of it. So, um, Ron's team is working to assess, take a needs assessment, and we will report back probably around this time next year in terms of whether or not we think there's another request for some high priority areas to, to invest in HVAC. So those two things are just sort of flagged around what's not in the actual recommended request for fiscal '26, but maybe coming back in fiscal '27 beyond. What is in the request, I'm going to turn it over to Julie and Ron, they are typical must-do kinds of things with some, particularly on the facility side, a lot of postponed deferred maintenance that we've been postponing and deferring, so we have prioritized those things. So I don't know if he wants to go first, but, uh, I think it's in order of presentation, maybe.
You have the lesser.
Ron is more interesting, but I'll, I'll go first, even without the pictures. We, we use more words this year, um, mostly due to time constraints, putting together a beautiful presentation of years past. We will miss that. The school request is quite simple and pared back. We had before, the fortunes of, of school lunch improved, um, identified a number of capital needs in the program by our outgoing, um, long-serving director of, of school and food, of nutrition. So we had put something in, we were able to take that, take that off because the, the fund is so healthy. You know, the cafeterias are shared by many users in the town, so, um, that, you know, that may come back again, but we're taking it off now, um, so that's just a point for you to be aware of, it was in last year's, um, long-range plan. The, um, the main items are our technology replacement for student and staff devices. This year, the request is for, um, just under $600,000. It varies whether it's, um, devices for students and staff, classroom instructional technology, the smart boards and the displays and things and, um, those guys, we don't use so many of those, um, and, and infrastructure like your, the things that make it all work, right? This year, it's mostly those first two categories and only $65,000 of that, of the whole is for, um, not servers, switches.
Switches, switches.
I, everything I know about technology is from osmosis. We brought in copiers, um, after much delay, um, at the, in, in February, I want to say, of last year. So we pushed those out, that was, that's, that's fine to do.
And you repurposed four, kept them in district.
We did, um, yeah, yeah, facilities, you guys got one. And we also got a copier to, um, to, um, the lunch program, yep, and, um, I forget where else. Yeah, so we're okay for copiers, um, of course, you know, people, I got a request for one this morning, which I had to say. Might have to wait on that, um, so, you know, um, we are, we are well, well sorted, um, there. And we do rely on the furniture fixture and equipment replacement article. It's really without, and we are not in a, in a, in a season, we're into boilers and roofs and HVAC, we're not into renovations, and that was really how we funded furniture replacement, the, um, the Davis renovation, the, the Lane expansion, um, that's, those are the building projects that would also fund some furniture. So that is an important article for us to, um, to maintain. So that was our request, um, it adds up over six years to a significant capital investment by the town. So, um, that is what has been put forward and I believe introduced to the capital, um, committee, um, Tuesday? Just, just, just this past Tuesday. So I will stop talking and let Ron get into the rest of it.
Okay, so, um, thank you for having me here. The first four lines of the facilities capital request are the ones you've seen over the past, I think, eight, 10 years. The equipment replacement is predominantly for, um, our auto scrubbers and our lifts that we use periodically throughout all the work we do. Custodians use auto scrubbers every day, they get a lot of use, they're just a great piece of equipment. I wish I had one for the first 15 years of my career here. Would have saved a lot of, a lot of time. And then the space modification, that came back in this year, we took it out last year as a budgetary request from the town looking to, um, you know, save some money. Yeah, it's back in, so, so in, in that one, you know, as, as you may or may not know, we asked the building principals, you know, at the end of the school year, what do you think your needs are for any classroom modifications for kids that are coming up that might need something? Maybe we're building a carol, you know, a study carol in the room, or something like that that we can do over the summer. Or, and it happens now more than, more than it has in the past, if a child during the year needs something done, that's that money that we pull and we're able to, to make space modifications to help the students that need that, you know, specialized space. So that's back in, we're happy to have that back in. The next real big one, which is very important, is the high school boiler replacement. They are coming up on, 30 years old by the time we get up to '27 when we actually replace it. The money's approved in '27, but it'll be realistically the next year because that'll have to be something that's done all the summer, and we'll plan it all and, and just get the, get it ready so the, the last day we turn those boilers off, we can get it in work and get those replaced. That being said, there are three massive boilers for that, it's the biggest building that we have in our, in our inventory in the town. So that being said, I don't know how to design it. So we have to, you know, go out and get a, a, a qualified HVAC engineer to design a system that's going to meet our ENZ goals. And, and that's what's happening in this year for $456,000. So it's, it's a study to look at what the building needs and then the design of the actual boilers and, you know, sourcing out what you're going to use. So, um, I'm a little hesitant that in this first go-around of the, our, of ENZ with the high school, I don't know if the technology is there to, to meet that goal. Police station, sure, fire station, new fire station, yes, they're smaller buildings. The, the electric boilers can handle that size. 230,000 square foot high school, larger animal, you know, so there's going, there, and I've been saying this to the E S C as well, um, you know, the, the, the current equipment lasts 15 years, we can plan on where these, these carbon boilers last 30 years, the new stuff maybe 15. So we're going to get another shot at 2050 ENZ goal. This is going to be huge this year, or these years coming up, that we're getting a much more efficient high school building and that's just going to help with the town's energy needs going forward and our budgeting going forward. So that's the goal there. In the same vein, the, the, the water heaters at the high school need to be replaced. They've reached their maximum, uh, life expectancy. We are making some repairs as we go along to keep them operating. So, uh, we will probably shift their gas-fired boilers now. We'll be swapping those over to electric as well, that's going to help us meet the ENZ goals. Davis school roof replacement, um, our last assessment of the roofs, they were all in very good shape. Still are in very good shape, so that 1.8 million is a, it's not a full rip and replace, it's a, um, it's a film spray onto the roof and it gets us a 20-year roof without having to really go through all the, the pain and suffering of the, of a major construction project. So that's what that represents, so the, the Davis roof is a, is a black rubber roof right now. Uh, most of it, the 2018 addition is a white PVC roof. So we'll be spraying a white PVC product on the rest of the roof and so it'll all be, uh, it'll all be uniform. And that will, the white roofs really help with energy efficiency as well because they're not sucking in all that heat. So, so looking forward to that project. Last but not least, Lane School paging System. It was originally installed in 2001, 2002, whenever the first major renovation of Lane happened. They don't make parts for it anymore, knock on wood, it works. If something goes wrong with it this year, we're going to be scrambling a little bit, so it needs to be done. That's it.
And this has already been vetted with the town.
Yeah.
So this is, nothing in here is a surprise, there's already been a bit of negotiating in terms of keeping our requests within what they were hoping for, so.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, let's start with the rest of the questions, uh, Angel?
Uh, I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you because all this stuff looks pretty important. Um, and so I'm glad you're staying on top of it, uh, and, you know, I appreciate it, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Okay, Sarah, go though.
Thank you for coming, I, um, was talking to Erin this summer about the furniture juggling and it made me realize more and more that it's, the furniture is really a part of, um, teaching and how we approach the classroom and how we set it up and how we want to do group, group work and, and that's, it's essential, so I just wanted to, um, say that it's always in the budget, but it's a, I learned that it was more important than I, I, I thought. I also want to just say a thanks, since you're here, more than the capital X, that, um, that, just thanks to your staff, they're great.
I have a great group of people.
You have a great, and the longevity of many of them is remarkable. Um, and that's a huge, huge benefit and testament to, yeah.
They're, they're, they're always willing to go above and beyond what's needed. You know, and it's not just in the schools, in the town, need help, anywhere, they're always there. I can, hey, we need to get this done, and we, we can get it done.
Yeah, Lucas found me random beige paint over the summer. It was like, yeah, I mean, he was like, yeah, what do you need, and what do you, where can I, you know, um, so, yeah.
A small example of this was, you may recall, the emergency mosquito spraying, um, last week, we had to do a notice thing and then Ron's team got the signs out in all the locations to comply. They were on it and then they went out and took, did they take them down too?
Some of them are down, we need to get some more, the ones that I put up, but personally, I need to go out and get them. But that, that'll, we'll get that done. Again, and they didn't even quite like, hey, meet me at the loading dock, gave them signs, put them here, and they were up in 10 minutes. You know, it's just, that's the type of crew we have.
Yeah, and this is another sort of while you're here, question two is, um, there's solar has been thrown around over the years. And, uh, right, I, I think it was one of the last, um, presentations we had before the shutdown of COVID, where we were going to lease them for the high school and it just didn't, it fizzled with COVID and I'm sure it wasn't worth it financially, but.
So it's still there, we are still looking into it, we are still researching, um, best applications for it. You know, part of the reason why we're doing the roofs over one, that, you know, they're, they're out of warranty, but also, if we are going to put anything on the roofs, the companies really want to see at least a 20-year warranty on the roof before they'll consider putting anything on. So, that being said, I'm somewhat shifting towards, um, you know, parking lot canopies in conjunction with some stuff on the roof. The problem with the roofs is, you get a new roof, five years later, you have a leak. Now you have a solar array on it, it's impossible to find where the leak is. On the other side, if you do a, a parking lot canopy, you're reducing heat islands, which helps with, you know, the, the warming of the, of the earth, so you're, um, you're helping with that situation and it's kind of nice because it provides people with covered parking, so in the wintertime, during rain, it gets people out of the, it gets people out of the weather. So we're looking at that as well. I like to, my original thoughts were purchasing them, now I'm looking towards leasing because if you purchase, if we own them, that means I need dedicated staff to be able to take care of them. I can't hire an electrician as it is, let alone two or three more, they're going to need to be able to work and be on the, on, on this equipment all the time. So there's a lot that's factoring into this, we need to come to the town and say, okay, what direction do you want us to go and here's the information, and that's what we're putting together.
Awesome, cool, that's all I have, thanks.
Great, thanks Sarah, Brad?
Uh, so let me just echo what Sarah said about the great staff, thank you so much, every time we, I, we're, um, cross paths with them, they're just wonderful, so, uh, I, I fondly remember so many times being helped, uh, when we were in the large group instruction room, they were always amazingly helpful to set up, take down, help us in and help us out, which is great, constantly. So just a few questions, great work, uh, I'm the liaison to the capital expenditure committee, so I probably need to set up a little time so I can just get a little more prepped for the time when you come to the meeting because I think there's a few things here that are going to raise some questions. So let me talk a little bit about the, uh, the information technology plan here. So about 600K a year for, for six years here, um, what has that number been historically? Like our annual amount for IT?
It, let me say two things.
Yeah.
One thing, it used to go up and down and up and down and down, which was hard for planning purposes.
Right.
So our team has done a lot of work to try to, to smooth it, um, and, um, they've been pretty successful. And I would say, uh, the, over the five, five years, we've seen it sort of creep up from maybe, um, 550 to 600, so the growth hasn't been, um, huge, um, so we realize it's a lot of money.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, uh, Cliff characterized some of the expenditures as deferred maintenance? So which parts of this, Ron, would you say are deferred maintenance?
Well, um, the paging system is definitely deferred, you know, um, the roof, you know, I would say the roofs are deferred, but because we have a fairly robust maintenance with them and we, and we take care of issues as they arise, we've gotten more life out of them. So we're reaching, we're reaching the point where we're going to have a, a big failure, so they, they need to, um, they need to be done. We can't, we can't push that off any longer, it's the same with the high school boilers.
Yeah, I remember last year that was on, I think last year, and then we're like, can you wait one more year?
Yeah, yeah.
The capital expenditure committee is fond of asking the question, we have to do it this year.
And, and, and.
So that's why, and the answers are very helpful.
Yeah, you know, we're, we're going to be fine with the high school boilers, but if two went down and we're zero degrees for a week, we're going to struggle to heat that building, you know.
And just because I'm naive about this, would it always be the case that you would replace all three boilers at the same time?
So that's going to be part of the study, so we may, again, I have to let the experts tell me how we can go about this, but we can probably switch to some kind of electric boiler and then two condensing boilers. Condensing boilers are much more efficient than the, the cast iron boilers that we have now. So, yes, I'd like to replace all three at once because they're all almost 30 years old.
Okay.
So it's just, um, you know.
I mean, for a lot of capital things, it's sort of makes sense to stagger it, right? So you have, you know, it's just a 15-year life, you have one every five years then, right? So, and then 15 years after that, but.
Yeah, but we can, because they're all installed at once, you kind of have to. But we can, because they're all installed at once, you kind of have to do them all at once. In the technology that's available now with, so it's not just the boilers, it's the pumps that pump all that water through the building. The drives that are associated with those pumps, the drives can vary the speed of the pump, so it, you're not pumping at 100% all the time. Well, you know, the school only needs 50%. So they ramp them up, they ramp them down depending on how, what the demand from the building is calling for. So as we go forward, we're probably going to replace them all at once. It's just the way it is. You know, we had the renovations, that. Made them new. Now it's all coming, you know, at the same time.
OK, thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, Brad. Sarah McInley?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I echo what everyone else says. My experiences have been uniformly positive. My question was regarding the boilers as well and staggering the replacement. So this all, you know, the way you explained it makes a lot of sense to me, so I don't have any questions at this point.
Likewise, going last minute, my question for an answer. We begin to appreciate thoroughness of this and the months that you've worked on together. This is scheduled to vote this evening so that we can then take it to the capital expenditure committee. So I would like to suggest the school committee approves FY26 capital expenditure request and update the six-year plan as presented to be forwarded to the capital expenditure committee.
So moved.
Second.
We'll call the, Angel?
Yes.
Sarah Scoville?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Sarah McInley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So that passes by 0 to 0 and is ready to be presented to the capital. OK, next up, we have our best, oh, sorry. Cliff, are you taking this next one?
Yeah, Julie is here to answer questions because Julie, thanks, Ron. So as we alluded to earlier, we were able to quickly settle a contract with the Bedford School Nutrition Employees Association, which is the new name. Julie led that negotiation. And I think one evidence similar to the ESP contract is we are fully staffed for the first time in many, many years. So we had the luxury of some additional funds in the revolving account, so we were able to make a competitive offer in a collaborative manner. It was a very collaborative conversation. The agreement is attached. And I actually, I don't know, I had one for you to sign, Sheila, but you're not here. I don't know, did I type your name in there? I don't know if it has to be the chair. You can sign it probably when you get back, so, or maybe Sarah McInley can sign.
Yeah, I'll be back Friday midday. I'll just hop over to sign it.
And so the vote is obviously your authorization to sign on behalf of the school committee.
Yeah, or it could be signed if it needs to be a real person signing it, I can do it Friday. The day is fine.
Friday's fine.
Friday's fine, yeah. Do you want to highlight anything else, Julie?
No. You have the bullets about the changes. Basically, our entry level salary has gone just barely over minimum wage to $18 an hour, which has made the difference. And there is opportunities for growth.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you both for getting with in our packets. We had to stay on three of it. So round of questions. Angel?
I have no questions other than to say that I am the opposite and my kids only eat school lunch every day.
Oh, good. We balance each other out.
I'll make up for yours. But no, but more importantly, I think similar to the ESPs, right? Like I think we, again, it was like a trumpet of we're paying, we're covering, we're scrambling, right? And now it's, we're fully staffed, things are going well, people can do their regular jobs now, right? That is going to make a difference to, you know, Mr. Donnelly's comment about, right? People, like they're happier, they're going to have stuff to be able to do, right? And so you'll do what they were hired to do, which is a benefit to kind of the infrastructure of everything. So this is good news all around.
Thank you, Angel. Sarah Scoville?
I agree. Thank you for your hard work in facilitating this and it's just great news.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Julie. No questions.
Sarah McInley?
Same thing. Great news. Thank you for all of your hard work through the process.
And I would like to thank the partners in the negotiation, Thomas School, our school and nutrition director, and also our assistant director was a key player in helping to work with our cafeteria managers who self-represent themselves. And so that is an interesting process and got it done. They're happy about that.
Well, again, a thank you. I echo our thanks, Julie, to you and the folks that helped negotiate this contract. Really appreciate it. And this is a critical group that helps support our nutrition in our schools. So appreciate it. So suggested motion, the school committee approves the 2024 to 2027 food services agreement as presented and authorized as chair, Julie, let it read, sign on the school committee's behalf.
So moved.
Second.
We'll call the, Angel?
Yes.
Sarah Scoville?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Sarah McInley?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that's five to zero to zero. Next, we move to the secret head of report.
Yes, just a couple of updates. Reminder, next week, we are, I mean, two weeks from now, we are at Hanscom Air Force Base. I believe we have all your credentials in line. Do you need yours?
I'll be there.
Oh, OK.
I'll be remote, but I will.
OK, so we will be on the base for the first time since, I haven't been there yet for a school committee meeting. There is, and maybe our press can help promote this, there is a meet and greet with the new commander, Commander Jimenez, at 6:30 with parents before. So parents on the base are welcome to come meet the new commander and school committee members if you can come early at 6:30. So that is our next meeting. And following that, back here, presumably here in this room on October 22nd, I want to again flag the finance-only, the first finance-only committee meeting where we will focus on the FY25 forecast, FY25 quarter one report, and the start of FY26 operating budget process. I also wanted to flag that we do have a transition underway at the high school, which is happened recently. Our counseling program administrator is transitioning to another role. We have a posted interim counseling program administrator position that we'd love to get the word out for. As some of you may know, this has been a position that has turned over a bit. So as part of, I will be working with the team to assess sort of what is, is this the right structure? Are there other ways that we can support particularly the post-secondary process at VHS as well as the emerging mental health needs of our students? And is this sort of structure the right structure? But we are looking for an interim to help us support staff through the year and we'll be posting some version of a permanent position comes the new year. If it is a significant revision to the job description, we would bring it to you all for discussion and approval before posting that. So I just wanted to flag that. And school continues to go well. I was able to spend a full day at Davis School last week. I am starting a habit of, in lieu of all the entry meetings that I had last year, I'm spending a full day at each school per month and sort of being out and about, but also scheduling sort of short one-on-ones with staff. Those have been very nice to sort of hear directly from staff and especially to see students in their element from start to finish in the day. So school, you know, is up and running. Have to report that activities are at full steam. Staff is working very hard, very appreciative for everything up and running this year.
Is that it, Cliff?
Yep, sorry.
All right. Angel?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. I want to thank Julie, the head of counseling, for her hard work she's put in the short time she's been here. So I'm looking forward to the analysis of that position and the future of that.
She will be here for the big post-secondary night. I think it's...
Thursday.
Thursday, yes. She'll be helping us out.
OK, great.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
All right. All right, wow, you guys are good. And I have my question for the manager, so thank you, Cliff, for that. And last but not least, we will now adjourn into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the Unit A contract negotiations with the backward education not to be reopened.
So moved.
Do I have, OK?
Second.
All right, thank you. We'll call the, Angel?
Yes.
Sarah Scoville?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Sarah McInley?
Yes.
And I am, so five to zero to zero. Thank you, Ron, and good night, Bedford.
Good night, Bedford.
Good night.